Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Smithtown Planning Board is now in session.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The first item on the agenda, the Planning Department recommends the following items for adjournment as we have insufficient information to act upon them. Part one, item one, number 1127.1, Catherine Estates. Part two, item two, number 2010-10, Edward and Patricia Martella. Item three, number 2010-09, RNF Management. Item four, number 2010-06, KVC Holdings. Item five, number 2010-02, King Cullen Grocery. Item six, number 2007-01, Gyronine Company of America. Item seven, number 2007-04, Society of St. Johnlin. Item eight, number 2009-05, FB4 Realty. Part three, item nine, number 1053A, Berg Estates. Item 10, number 911A, Glen Hill Northern. Part four, item 11, number TC11-01, T-Mobile Northeast. Part five, item 13, 288A, Application of Olivia Estates. Item 14, number 926, Countryside. Mr. Chairman, these are the items the Planning Department recommends for adjournment this evening.
Is there anybody here to be heard on those items to be adjourned?
No, this is coming to drop the sauce for somebody. My brother's actually sick.
Will you come up here to the...
That's for Glen Ridge, the performance bond application.
What is it, the performance bond?
Can you hang around for a couple of minutes? It's okay.
Do I need to stay?
Yeah, just a couple of minutes.
Anyone else? All right.
Okay. Did they...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the items. Red?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? So ordered.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, the next item on the agenda, under part five, item 12, number 1073, Glen Ridge Estates. The applicant requests to extend the performance bond for a period of two years to expire on February 10th, 2013, in order to obtain more time to complete construction and all necessary improvements. The applicant received conditional final approval for this three-lot subdivision from the Planning Board on December 1st, 2004. A performance bond estimate in the amount of $60,987 was approved by the Board and subsequently signed by the Chairman. The applicant submitted the bond monies and all related materials to the town, and the Town Board accepted a performance bond issued by the service insurance company on June 14th, 2005. Planning Board approval for this performance bond expired on February 10th, 2011. The Engineering Department contacted the applicant by later date of January 19th, informing them the bond would expire and that they should contact the Planning Department to make the appropriate application to the Board. The applicant submitted a performance bond extension application on February 25th to the Planning Department, and the application was distributed to all departments concerned for review. The Engineering and Highway Departments have no objection to the performance bond extension request and have determined that the bond amount is sufficient to cover all remaining improvements. The Traffic Safety Department has no objection to the applicant's request, however, as noted in their memorandum dated March 24th, 2011, the applicant must contact Tony Canone at Traffic Safety to discuss the immediate installation of the Traffic Department's noted sign, pavement markers, markings, and street lighting requirements for the subdivision. Planning has performed an onsite inspection of the subdivision and has determined that most of the required public improvements have been completed. The applicant must complete the final paving of Glen Ridge Lane, satisfy the conditions of approval for the sidewalk waiver granted by the Board on March 17th, 2010, and complete the Traffic Department's bonded requirements. The Planning Department has no objection to the applicant's request to extend the performance bond, however, Planning recommends the bond be extended for one year, giving the applicant sufficient time to complete the final paving, satisfy the sidewalk waiver conditions, complete Traffic Safety's requirements, and begin the performance bond release process. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration. Be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby approves a retroactive extension of the performance bond for the subdivision known as Glen Ridge Estates, number 1073, for a one-year period to expire on February 10th, 2012. Mr. Chairman, this is the Planning Department's recommendation for Glen Ridge Estates, number 1073.
Anyone here representing the applicant? Are you gentlemen? Any objections there to the extension of the performance bond? A motion?
Mr. Chairman, in reference to Glen Ridge Estates, number 1073, I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of the performance bond for a period of one year to expire on February 10th, 2012.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Mr. Chairman, while Mr. Condos is still here, we just want to go to part six of the agenda, other matters.
Mary Ellen just needs his name on the record. Maybe he can come up.
Give her your name.
Yeah, just come up to the microphone and give your name and address, please.
Nick Condos, 42 Bar Road, East Northport, New York. C-O-N-D-O-S.
Thank you.
Under part six of the matters, item 16...
Well, there's some other people here first. Is there anything there that you people here are going to be concerned with, or with the exception of other matters? Oh, okay.
Okay. The applicant for Glen Ridge Estates, as noted in the memorandum I just read, was granted a conditional approval on a sidewalk waiver March of last year by the Board. The condition of approval was that the applicant was going to contribute $1,500 to the town's sidewalk fund in order to have a handicap accessible curb cut ramp replaced right around the corner from the subdivision. The applicant, Mr. Condos's brother, who made the application for this performance bond extension, is a approved contractor with the town and has done work for the town in the past, concrete work and with handicap accessible ramps. In lieu of contributing the $1,500, Mr. Condos prefers to actually do the work himself and install the handicap curb cut through his own company, which we have no objection to at all.
And he's giving that to you there and...
He'll be doing the work directly.
Okay. Any questions by the Board on it?
He's just going to do the work himself?
He's going to do the work himself.
Exactly. And he'll be inspected by the Engineering Department and...
He's certified as one of Town Bid for that, so we think he would probably do the work anyways.
And he give you any timeframe as to when it's going to be done?
He'll do it immediately.
You'll do it within the... You'll do it within the extension of the performance bond?
Absolutely.
Okay. Why not?
Good idea.
Okay. Counsel, report.
My place is handing out the maps. This is reference to Gemini Landing in Fort Zalanga. If you recall, this matter came up previously about six weeks ago before the Board with regard to a proposal under this subdivision for an access onto Berry... the Berry Hill subdivision. At that time, there were... the Planning Department and the Engineering Department had recommended that the access be rerouted through Meadow Road, which is the current access to this particular site, and not through and attaching to the cul-de-sac, which you see on the map itself of Berry Hill. At the meeting, the applicant presented or testified that his easement prohibit him from accessing Meadow Road with more than one home, and we asked for the documentation on that so that the Council to the Board can review that matter. There was a couple of submissions that we had, and I believe Council now has the report with regard to that. I would note, for the record, however, and this is something that I just informed Council of this afternoon, that on last Friday, the owners of the properties, the Dolans, which are sitting in the office, came to see me, and they are requesting a subdivision of their particular lot and are amenable to working with this applicant on establishing a private road that would access this particular site, and that would be off of Meadow Road. If that's the case, this would meet with the Planning Department and Engineering Department would recommend for this particular site, which is a small private road that would cul-de-sac and would access the applicant's two lots as well as the two lots for the Dolans. And with that, I would turn it over to Counsel to discuss what his findings were with regard to the easement.
Now, this... I know that Mr. Tramaco was representing this applicant originally. Has he been notified of this... of what's going to happen here?
He was representing, not this applicant, he was representing, as far as I understand, the Dolans.
I thought he was representing this applicant.
No, he wasn't representing.
Mr. Morbillo was representing this applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Tramaco is representing the Dolans. That's the next... that's the property next door.
Okay.
We got the... We gave you... We got the library. We sent... We didn't have the instructions.
So essentially, the easement was still applied that for time?
Yes. If you want to... He wants access to this road.
This is... Gemini has an easement for this particular...
You know...
No, they don't have...
He was representing somebody in the application.
This is their easement right here. This is the Dolans who own this property here. They want to subdivide and create two lots here, and you're saying for the cul-de-sac here...
But all discussion today is in fact that...
This is a report of Council's not hearing. Why is somebody sitting here? I don't know. This is the Dolans property right here. This is the... They own the lot right here. Right here. Right. This applicant's looking to subdivide. He wants to go for that one, wants to come down.
That's all I want. Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Michael Morbillo. I'm an architect. My firm is Inspired Design Group. My offices are at 700A Kohler Avenue in Roncockman, New York. We're here again this evening. My client is... will be here in a few minutes. He thought the... this review was starting at 8:30, so he'll be here within the next five minutes. What we have before you, as Mr. Derubias had just mentioned, is a two-lot land division for a parcel, which is approximately two and a half acres. We're dividing into a one-acre parcel, or we're proposing to divide into a one-acre parcel on the northern portion and an acre and a half parcel on the south portion. And we were before this Board in an advisory capacity back in November, and at that hearing, there was a question brought up about the legality of crossing the easement that now serves one lot. We... just a correction, we didn't make a statement that we couldn't prohibit the... we couldn't prohibit... we couldn't cross the existing easement, which is owned by the Dolans, but we... it was not a preferred manner as far as access to a right-of-way, so...
It was my understanding that your proposal to exit onto Berry Hill Drive was because it was the only available means of egress from the property.
No.
I've reviewed the deeds in question concerning the easement, and it's quite clear, in my opinion, is that your client has access out to Meadow Glen Road by utilizing the easement, and now, in light of the new information we received, the Dolan intends to file a subdivision themselves, and in fact, will take that easement and make it a road to be shared by both your client and him, the question of exiting onto Berry Hill Drive would seem moot.
Okay. They haven't submitted a plan yet, though. So, we have a plan before you.
I want you to hold your breath.
Yes.
It'll be done.
Yeah.
But in any event, I mean...
Yeah, I understood.
Our position is still the same, that your most advantageous means of egress from the property in the town's position, the Planning Board's position, out to Meadow Glen Road by means of the easement, which is available to your client, that the attempt to go out to Berry Hill Drive might make up for a nice country drive, but is not the most beneficial means of egress from the property.
Okay. I think that opinion is for the Planning Board. You're making a statement that's your recommendation to the Planning Board, or that's the position of the Planning Board?
Well, my understanding is what we're doing here right now is a report of our counsel. I don't think we have a hearing on tonight for you to present evidence, so maybe we can listen to what our lawyer has to say.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
All right. Thank you. Are you done, Ron?
I'm done.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, the question that from the last meeting was not that, as far as access across the easement, it's just that it wasn't the preferred access to the site, and that, being that it is presently private property, accessing across it, adding another home to that, as the Chairman had stated at the last meeting, cross easements produce problems. And, yes?
Frank. I recall, but I don't have the record in front of me. I believe that was the whole point of contention, was that this Meadow Glen access would not be possible because there was a prohibitive easement.
That's... well...
No, they couldn't use the easement.
They couldn't use the easement.
They couldn't use the easement.
Right, and I think that was the reason for going through Berry Hill.
That was presented, and what was asked, what I believe Jim or Adam, I don't recall which one, you asked to see the wording of that easement to refer to the council. So, that's what we did. We asked the applicant to submit to us a record of that particular easement. What they did was they... we got... they eventually gave us all the documentation, and we gave it to Council, and it isn't, in Council's opinion, prohibited. That was the issue that was...
In other words, we would give... we had an application, and he wanted to come through Berry Hill.
Right.
Part of the reason for that was that because there was an easement out onto Meadow Glen that he claimed, or it was claimed that it could not be used.
For two lots. We never claimed... we never claimed that at the last meeting. It's not in the minutes, no.
There was no possibility of getting an easement into this property, is that correct?
Yeah.
But the easement exists.
Right.
In fact, it was granted to that property for a specific purpose. Dolan gave up... gave the right to exit.
We're very familiar with this easement. This easement was originally part of the Bogie Estate. Mrs. Bogie sold her property to John Hurtado, who developed Berry Hill subdivision. When that was approved, and at the time when he was doing this, the Dolans had submitted a subdivision for their particular property, which this Board approved, and which they were having questions with regard to their easement on their property. So, we had Mr. Hurtado give this land, which the land which is on the easement, which serves for the Gemini property as well, that was given to the Dolans. And that was all intended at that particular time to provide access for both properties that were in this particular area. And I test... I made that statement at the November, or the meeting that we had, the same issues. So, what we had been left to, and I'm sorry, Mr. Morbillo, in November, my understanding was that your client could not... you could access for one lot, but you could not access for two.
Not at all. You can go to the minutes on it.
The minutes will speak for themselves as to what was said and what wasn't said. But the bottom line is, there was a question raised about the viability of that easement as it pertained to these properties, which is why we had gotten opinion from Counsel.
Yes.
And now, Counsel, having reviewed whatever documents he needed to review, is telling us that there is a viable easement for both of these lots out onto Meadow Glen Road.
That's correct.
So that if his application is that he needs to come in through Berry Hill, it might be his application because he thinks that's the better way to go, but it's not because he can't do it the other way, because Ron is telling us that he can't.
Correct.
Correct.
And just to clear up, in other words, this application has been made, have the people that live in this area been notified of this application or a change?
They've been notified by my client. The two people at the end of the court have been, yes.
Your what?
They have been noted... the two owners at the end of the court have been notified by my client.
Has it been posted?
No, we're not even... we haven't even... the map hasn't even been accepted, put before you.
Well, I think before we make a decision on any of this, especially where there's an application pending to do something there, to have an access to this property, one of the problems that we had was how to view this piece of property in the back vis-à-vis there emergency vehicles or something like that. And whereas, you know, this was... this was a thing that was considered, but it wasn't there... it wasn't there locked up there in stone until there's such time there as we knew what was going to happen with that easement.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think the matter was, was the reason why we brought this before the Board was...
You mean tonight?
Well, no, originally, was because we had mentioned to the applicant, both Engineering and Planning's recommendation was not to come through Berry Hill, because that would cause a significant amount of physical disturbance to the property. And if we asked the Board to inspect it, and if you did go onto Berry Hill, you would note that the lawn goes up a bit, and that there are woodlands at the end of those... that particular lawn, and that if you note, even on the applicant's plan, it shows a substantial amount of regrading that would have to occur, as well as the construction of some retaining walls, all of which, if that was the sole access to this property, then so be it, but we've...
But there's an alternative, and...
There's an alternative which we...
The alternative related to this easement was on tonight for the purpose of getting Counsel's report on the viability of the easement, which we now have.
Right.
So, as far as tonight's concerned, we're finished.
I don't... I don't think we're... yeah, maybe we are, but...
As far as tonight's proceeding is concerned, maybe...
Well, I think what we're looking for the Board, the Chairman requested that we get the opinions of the applicant, but, I mean, the owners of the property, but I think the owners of the property, if given the choice of having nothing disturbed on their property, would probably prefer that rather than having the road.
So, that's what I think is... should be considered there before we go much further with this, is whatever this gentleman wants to present to us there and not there, the original intention that we... or the original plan that we were presented with is to get there, the neighborhood notified of what we're going to do or not do.
But I think if we don't do anything, I think the... I realize I'm speaking for the neighborhood, but if we don't do anything on Berry Hill Drive, I think they would be happy. I... you know, there's... what I think is, is that there's sufficient access, and especially since we have a potential another subdivision in this particular area, let's just build a small road in this location for access off for about three homes, and that's to be sufficient. And we're talking about something that's very inattrousive to the neighborhood. We're just widening, which is essentially a driveway that is right here, and I have explained to both parties that as a private road, we'll go for the minimum width.
But, if I may, the information that Dolan intends to file a subdivision, although it's not filed as the architect indicates, will have an impact, because if you consider... if you put Gemini to have access to Berry Hill, and Dolan comes in, well, I want access to Meadow Glen Road, you're going to have two different roads serving the same adjacent parcels.
Well, let's... let me clear up about... the road that comes in there... what is this, Berry Hill now, right? Oh, this is Berry Hill down here. This road that comes in off of...
That's Meadow Glen.
Meadow Glen.
Coming off Meadow Glen.
That was intended originally to go all the way through to Berry Hill, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, now, that's being terminated someplace there, up at the end of the... this gentleman's property, and it's not going to go any further. How is that going to impact?
Okay. If... I addressed it at the last meeting, and I'll go... you know, I'll repeat what I said at the last meeting. When we did the Berry Hill subdivision, our original intent was to connect those two streets, and we designed that particular right-of-way with that in mind. When that subdivision came under construction, we realized that there was a topographical change there, and we actually shortened the cul-de-sac deliberately.
Yes, I saw that.
Okay. We brought the cul-de-sac back. Instead of we... what we normally do is we bring a cul-de-sac all the way up to the property line when we're doing it. And what we said at that time, and this was... I'll pull the records, and I'll see if I can find it, some correspondence, was that our intent was, by bringing the cul-de-sac back, was not to bring the road through. We had a recharge basin there, which was one of the reasons why we were bringing the road through, and we finally got access of that recharge basin off the... another road that runs parallel to that, so we don't need to bring the road down at that particular location. So, when we did the Berry Hill subdivision, we already... once it was under construction, we made the decision not to bring that road through. But, Mr. Chairman, you're correct. Our original intent was to have a road going all the way through. What we could live with in this particular area is two cul-de-sacs, one at Berry Hill and one from the other street, and Engineering and Planning find that acceptable. And to me, this is very reasonable for this particular area.
Frank, I'd like to ask Counsel, that's a basic question, I think he's already answered it. There is no restriction for a road coming off of Meadow Glen, as far as any easement restrictions go?
No, there is an easement of ingress and egress.
Fine.
That was granted by Dolan, or by... should I say, by Bogie?
But there is no restriction limiting the amounts of parcels to be developed within a subdivision?
Does the applicant agree with that? That there's no restriction? Do you agree with the Counsel?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we agree with that. Yeah, it was raised as a matter at the... I think you had raised it as a question to the last hearing, because we were talking about easements to access the property, and they... it was said, let's get this information, because my client and his limited counsel thought that adding another person to a private easement, adding another lot to a private easement, created matters, just like any matter you would have when you have, you know, somebody's crossing somebody else's property, there becomes issues as who maintains it, who has to take care of it, which issues have come up in the past, and now we're exacerbating. So, that was the only question that came up. It was in the discussion of cross easement, because there'll be a shared driveway at the end of this application that's, you know, preliminarily before you. So, there wasn't ever any question, but it was asked by you, okay, this may be a factor. If we can't do it, then we shouldn't even, you know, let's move... let's look at Berry Hill, so... because that would affect, you know, potentially affect the decision. So, there wasn't a question to say whether or not that Berry Hill was our only access, but it seemed that the Board had mentioned, well, if that's not a viable access, then we shouldn't consider it. So, and that's when, I believe, we went to Counsel. You can look at the minutes from the last meeting. We didn't... we were not contending as far as access. It's not a desired access for us at this moment.
But, once again, and I think I reiterate, going back to the proposed subdivision that Dolan contemplates, if you take Gemini at its value and gives it... give it a driveway, it looks like some several hundred feet long out of Berry Hill Drive...
200 feet.
200 feet. And Dolan comes in, he's going to essentially take the easement, which is on his property, and it'll become now his 50-foot road out onto Meadow Glen.
Yeah. No, let's... I understand where you're coming from. You know, that's a 600-foot easement that exists right now. You know, Mr. Dolans had the prop... has had this subdivision approved, the Planning Board can confirm this 15 years. There's been no action on it. My client approached the Dolans and talked about doing something together three years ago, maybe a little bit more. There was no participation. My client went out and hired his own survey, did all his own, you know, topographic surveys, everything, put everything together, and two years ago, we submitted this map, so, you know... So there wasn't a question to say whether or not that Berry Hill was our only access, but it seemed that the board had mentioned, well, if that's not a viable access, then we shouldn't consider it. So, and that's when, I believe, we went to council, you can look at the minutes from the last meeting. We didn't, we were not contending as far as access. It's not a desired access for us at this moment.
I think I reiterate, going back to the proposed subdivision that Dolan contemplates, if you take Gemini at its value and gives it, give it a driveway, it looks like some several hundred feet long out of Berry Hill Drive.
Two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet. And Dolan comes in, he's going to essentially take the easement, which is on his property, and it'll become now his fifty-foot road out onto Meadow Glen.
Yeah, no, let's, I understand where you're coming from. You know, that's a six-hundred-foot easement that exists right now. You know, Mr. Dolan's had the prop, has had this subdivision approved, the planning board can confirm this fifteen years. There's been no action on it. My client approached the Dolans and talked about doing something together three years ago, maybe a little bit more. There was no participation. My client went out and hired his own survey, did all his own, you know, topographic surveys, everything, put everything together, and two years ago, we submitted this map, so, you know.
But he can compel action by saying, I'm going to exercise my right to grant it under the easement.
Excuse me, say it again?
He could say, he can compel action by insisting upon enforcing his rights granted under the easement.
He could, Mr. Dolan could insist action?
No, your client.
Yeah. Well, here's the situation. He doesn't want access across that easement. It's not desirable to him, it's, he's got, he's got closer access to Berry Hill from his property. It's, again, two-hundred-foot driveway. Mr. Dolan just showed up last Friday for this, okay? He's had this, his subdivision approved for, like I said, fifteen years. My client approached him. All right, I see it's a little bit of a game changer right now, but there's no, I didn't mean to be, apologize, I didn't mean to be sarcastic. There's not an application in, so.
Mr. Morbillo, I, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I, I did speak to your client on a number of occasions.
Yeah.
Prior to coming through this particular hearing.
Yes.
And I said very specifically, and gave instructions, because I was familiar with the Dolans and their subdivisions and this particular area, to go and speak to them.
He did.
And, you know, this was prior to this, and this is why we brought this up before the board, is because we had a stalemate on this particular issue. But at that particular time, I did state to him at at least one meeting, and I believe Blaze was at that meeting, to speak to the Dolans, because I felt that they were well aware of what we were trying to do in this particular area. And I was led to believe, although you're saying it's not exactly correct, that they were not supportive of this. And then they come and meet with me on Friday, and it's a different of opinion on this. And I, you know, this is not like it's being brought up at the eleventh hour. This was, the reason why we're back before this board is because we cannot, the planning cannot agree with the applicant, and I would include engineering on this, that that's where the action should be. And we feel that there, this is a relatively straightforward subdivision with the minimal amount of disturbance to this area coming off of Meadow Glen. And if, and if the, both property owners are amenable to this, why go through all this destruction of this other property, which we knew ten years ago was not the way to design this particular subdivision? And that's basically why we're here.
Well, we're here for a report of council, which we had.
Yes.
So as far as I'm concerned, we're done, wasn't on for a vote tonight.
Right.
Right, so we've heard the report of council.
Well, there's just one more thing I want to clear up there.
Sure.
Before we go any further, all right?
Yes.
One of the things that the planning department has objected to in the past is having a house that was not clearly seen from the road.
Yes.
Okay? Now, this is going to be a different operation than what originally was brought to us to come in off of their Meadow Glen, okay? So I want, I want an opinion from the planning board, when they handle all of this, how they want to, how they want this to go. I don't have any problem with reviewing something, so long as the neighbors and everybody is notified, and then we can proceed with it.
Well, that's, that's all we wanted. That's all we want, is just for this application to go before the board. We submitted this application two years ago. It was handed back to us as presented, and said, we're not going to review it. And then we're told to revise and resubmit, approach the Dolans, approach the neighbors, and we did that. We did a due diligence, and now we're back here. I'm not saying it's eleventh hour, but Mr. Dolan's here tonight, if, you know, if the, if the board wants him to speak, that's fine. We've met with, we met with engineering, we reviewed with environmental outside of the normal circuits, very unorthodox review of the plans. And highway and traffic, no objections. Only recently, with engineering, did they bring up some concerns about clearing trees for a roadway which was originally approved by the planning department. So clearing trees inside of a right-of-way. So that's all, we just want this application to come in front of the board. We are not concerned about working with the Dolans at this point. We've put it before them. They may do something. They've had the property for fifteen years. They've done nothing, in the biggest building boom there was, nothing was done. They were approached a few years ago, maybe they have something contrary to say, but we're not interested, and my client is here, he can speak for himself. We're not interested in pursuing an application with them. We'll put the application before the board on its merits, and then have you judge it, then present the proper, you know.
Let me just finish with this, with this.
Yes.
What I, I don't have any problem reviewing whatever the planning department wants to present to us.
Yes.
But I want everything there, you know, explained to the board, what you're going to do, and why you're going to do it, okay?
Yes.
And especially the notification there for the people on, what's that, Berry Hill Drive.
Absolutely, yes.
You want to notify them.
Certainly.
What you're going to do when you make this application, okay?
Certainly, and we, we have submitted the application, and we've been, you know, we've been asked to do things by the planning department to, again, try and, you know, approach different people, different parties. My client's done a lot of, again, due diligence to try and reach out to neighbors, to the Dolans, to look at, to look at options on it. We, at this time, my client, there is not a, you know, a developed road over there, cul-de-sac, I understand that as of Friday, we were here in November, as of Friday, that they're talking about doing this. Right now, there's two accesses into this neighborhood. There's an access off of Meadow Glen, and there's an access off of Berry Hill.
Okay.
We wish to move forward and have this application go throughout its normal course, and then come before you. That's all that we ask. We've done this as a courtesy, really.
Any other questions by the board?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, let's close this hearing, then, and let these gentlemen prepare whatever you're going to there to do with the planning department. To be able to resolve our questions. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to? Okay, would you come up and give your name and address, please?
Do they have an attorney representing them? I'm Tom, and this is Carolyn Dolan, 39 Meadow Glen Road in Fort Solange.
Oh, you're the gentleman that owns that property?
Right, we have the right-of-way that we were conveyed to from Beth Bogie, and that was quite some time ago when we did our subdivision. We had one acre in the front, subdivided in the front. Now we have a parcel on the back, which is around, close to three acres. We'd like to subdivide that farther.
Do you have council there representing you now?
Vincent Triamarko.
He couldn't make it tonight.
He couldn't make it tonight, okay.
Right. He, he knows what's going on, so we spoke with him.
Is he aware that you're here, and what you're doing?
Yes, okay. Probably.
Well, first of all, we're not, we don't even know what's proposed, because this gentleman is correct. Gordon had met with us in 2006. We had prepared a subdivision proposal in 2006, which we brought to the planning department, and it was a roadway that came from the back area. And at the time, we were told by the planning department that that was unacceptable, and exactly what was said was the reason being, the other cul-de-sac was cut short for topographical reasons, et cetera. About four months after that, Gordon had approached us and said he wanted to subdivide. So we showed him our map, and we said we were just at the planning board, and they told us no. And at that time, and I have notes from our meeting, that we said that if you want to pursue that, that is our preferred way of coming in also. We would rather come in to the back to subdivide. And we offered to come to the town with him.
So are you willing, are you willing to work with them?
Absolutely. When we went in on Friday, and they said that this was up before, they, we were, I don't even know what you have up here. Is it a full road? Is it a driveway? I mean, that's what we came to see. So it appears to just be a driveway that accesses.
Coming off of Meadow Glen. Well, I mean, from, from this way.
From Berry Hill.
From Berry Hill. I mean, that's what we originally wanted to do, and we were told it's not.
Well, we were going to put a road in. That's what we were suggesting.
Yeah.
All right, what I think you better do is contact your council. Have his, your council contact this gentleman, and see there with the planning department if you can work out whatever you both agree with. We're not, we're not here to try to stop people from doing something. We're here just to make sure that everybody is treated fairly, all right? Okay?
That's, yeah. I'm just curious why the people in the court were notified and we weren't. I mean, we're.
This wasn't on for a hearing tonight.
But he said that they notified the other people on Berry Hill. Why did they notify them?
No, what he said was, is that when we were doing this subdivision, that we felt that the people who were on Berry Hill would not want this road to come through. And he said that he contacted them, and let them know, and that they were, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but they were not objecting to that construction. That was what the applicant said.
Okay.
And the people on Berry Hill will be notified officially by letter and by posting, whatever there is agreed to with the planning director to go forward with, all right? So that it's not going to be a question that somebody doesn't know what's going to happen, it'll all be posted, okay?
Okay.
All right. Any other questions by the board?
No.
Anybody in the audience that wishes to be heard on this also? Okay.
They've received your report, and it's up to the board.
Right, we heard the report.
We have the report.
If he wants to talk to them about working something out, they can. If not, then he'll, his application will go forward, and we'll vote on it as, as it is, right? One way or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it? Counsel, you'll give us a, you'll give us a report there on the letter that I gave you? Yes, okay. Any other, anything out of the business?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered.